Yes, again.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, there we go.
We got the live stream notice, then I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. This virtual meeting is a meeting of the board in order to meet with Rain Associates, our superintendent search firm, in order to discuss the outreach results around qualifications for this next superintendent on North Shore School District. So, thanks everyone for joining us. We have our wonderful Peggy King, the entire school board is here, Vice President Sotak, Directors Jacque McGordy, Han Tran and Sandy Hayes, as well as the entire Rain Associates team. So, this is kind of your agenda, Dr. Chestnut. So, if you want to dive in whenever or whoever's kicking us off, feel free to go.
Well, thank you. We had the pleasure to be with you, President Cast, members of the board, Peggy. We are excited to be sharing with you tonight. I'm Steve Chestnut, number one. There's Steve Chestnut, number two, and Steve Chestnut, number three. I think I shared my invite with Rich and Richard. So, we do have two Richards, but only one Steve, so just hopefully that's not too confusing. But we're very excited to be here tonight. A lot has happened since we last met on March thirteenth, and we have a lot of progress to share with you. Peggy King has been really helpful this past month and greatly appreciated. And President Cast and I have been talking weekly to make sure the process stays on track. So, all those things seem to be working so far. And so, our second slide is our team who you've already met, and they are here and ready to go. We're gonna, we're going to just divide up this presentation. So, I will turn it over to Rich McBride and let him get started.
All right. Well, thank you, Stephen. Good evening also. Just a genuine pleasure to see you all again. I want to walk us through the agenda for this evening. We want to start out by just sharing with you some of the major themes that came out through the stakeholder sessions. We want to present the survey comments and reserve and review some of those survey results with you. We want to discuss the thirty-one characteristics and have some discussion around that. Then finally, want to discuss the characteristics that are recommended and to be considered, and that'll help us then finalize the profile this evening. And then lastly, we want to review the search timeline one more time. So, Richard, next slide, if you would please. You know, these next, the next two slides I'm going to share with you, you've got a lot of verbiage, but let me just kind of summarize what it is that they are saying. As you know, the board directed all of us at Rain Associates to work with students, parents, staff, and community to develop an accurate profile for your next superintendent. We also interviewed individual board members as well to get your perspectives. And lastly, for those maybe who are unable to attend the stakeholder meetings in person, we conducted a survey. That survey was conducted in several languages, and you're going to hear more about the results of that survey here in just a, just a couple of minutes. Next slide, Richard, please. And then this particular slide, just a summary. We went through all of the stakeholder meetings and gathering and information just essentially to make sure that we not only gathered critical feedback, but we also had an opportunity as we met with each of those groups to educate them on the process of going through the search. The information from the stakeholder meetings and the survey really does become critical as we develop this, this final profile. All of my Rain Associates colleagues will tell you the number one question we get from candidates when they call or in our recruiting calls with them is the, the exact question is what exactly is the board and the North Shore community looking for? And so, the profile becomes critical in outlining that. Secondly, the profile becomes critical to the actual screening of the potential applicants. So, as the completed applications come in, we have an opportunity to lay them beside the, the profile, if you will, and that helps us then screen potential applicants to recommend to you for either first round or second round interviews. And then finally, that information from the profile becomes integral to the actual interview process itself because we actually use the profile to help develop the actual interview questions that are going to be used in the, in the final interviews that we go through. So, next slide, Libra and colleagues will walk, just kind of walk us through what we heard from the stakeholders and what the survey participants had to tell us. Libra?
Thank you, Rich. First and foremost, I just want to start us off with a quote. Community is the foundation of success. And I have to say, your community is pretty amazing. We, we do many of these often, and people have lots of opinions and lots of ways of stating their opinions. What was really obvious and profound about the North Shore community was people said similar things, but they use the same language. And so, to me, that is such a strong foundation because it's not about like a variation of thought is really important. That's, that's an important factor that you want in community, but more importantly, people said things, led with the same things in the same way over and over again. So, just a huge kudos to your community. A huge kudo to you guys because you guys got a lot of compliments as board members. And so, I just want to just ground us in that your foundation for this to be successful is really strong. So, kudos, kudos, kudos. We are off to a great start. So, March twenty-fifth and twenty-fifth, we held several online meetings with your stakeholders. We had between five, well, as little as two, as many as eleven participants in each one. It was really a successful day. Next slide, March twenty-sixth, same thing, held several, some online, some in person. Again, our minimum was two, and they went up to five. And I will say this, even though those numbers seem small, they're not. Some people are more comfortable doing surveys. We have a great response in your surveys.
Yeah.
Some people have easier times doing surveys just because time doesn't afford them to drive somewhere and do all the things, you know? The people that came were very engaged, whether it was online or in person. So, since we are public, I will say thank you, community, for showing up and for allowing us to get this information. One-on-one sessions, or I'm sorry, one-on-one sessions were also conducted with the cabinets on the second and the third, same thing, language very similar, but things that were important were very similar, variations of things, of course, but the importance list was very, very similar. There's a lot of clarity in this community, and my, another quote I love is clarity is kindness. So, next slide. Some themes. So, the first question that we asked was about the district. This was the one that was always first in supportive community were the words that everyone used. So, I just loved that. It was like by my third meeting, and I don't know, I haven't even talked to Steve about this, but by my third meeting, I was like, I would ask this question to say, I know what you're gonna say. Like, it was pretty awesome. Dedicated staff, that was also repetitive, effective school board. Those were always the top three, maybe not in that order, but they always came out really, really clear. And then, of course, some of these other things, which were pretty traditional for, you know, strengths in a community, but just profound professionalism, strong reputation, labor union relations, really powerful strengths, and again, a good foundation to start with. The next question, next slide, was about the strength in the community. So, the first one was about the district. This one was about that surrounding community and what, what are we bringing someone to? What does that look like? Again, number one, supportive community, family oriented, lots of kudos about the, the diversity in the community, how it's grown, how it's just changed, the fact that there's lots to do outside and in the outdoors, lots of options. And, and the small town feel was also a really profound comment. People felt like you can still get to a city, but the, the feel of the immediate area was really something that they thought was excellent for a family, a growing family in particular. Next slide. Leadership qualities, communication. I think anytime someone mentions communication, people are clear that poor communication, of course, begins many gaps. So, that was absolutely first in most people's minds. Collaborative, based on some of the other comments, it was very clear they wanted people to remain connected and remain involved in the process. They wanted that to be a priority and transparency, high integrity, long-term vision. People want people to stay. People are very, very prideful of this community and rightfully so. And so, they want someone that wants to join in and do that in a, in a way that's engaging and also authentic and keeps building relationships in the community. Uh, next. Critical issues. Another one that was always said first is budget reductions. I think that anyone living on the planet today, or at least in America, would know this is definitely a number one, and it came out first in every one of the meetings. The levy and the bond being a concern that's coming up, bargaining coming up, maintaining a school board that's similar to what you guys are, are being perceived as, of course, managing the political climate and managing interest groups, which, which really was a statement on keeping that collaboration because there's many interest groups that are involved and involve supportive community. So, maintaining that interest group like process and making sure that stays engaged and, and starting to think about the boundary changes that are potentially coming. And then we'll click on the survey. So, in, in the online survey, there were lots of opportunities for folks to make comments, and you should have access to this. There are eighty-one pages of comments. Even going through these comments, some of the, the themes that we just mentioned in the list, they're very prominent in these comments throughout the eighty-one pages. There's, of course, there's some things in there that are not a part of our like main theme list, doesn't make them any less important. We're really just kind of pull out those major themes that people keep saying over and over again. We highly encourage you to review these comments because obviously, these are people who took time to say something, and they want you to know something, and this is your community voice. And like I said earlier, community is the foundation of success. And so, they are definitely willing to tell you what is important. And so, this is a, a piece of gold for you guys because there's a lot of written document, documented data on how people feel in your community. So, well done, not just to you guys, but to the community. This is a, this is an excellent community to bring someone to and help lead to the next level of North Shore.
Thank you, Libra. At this point, just want to pause for a second and check in with the board, make sure there aren't any questions before we kind of keep moving ahead.
And this might be an opportunity to either now or when we get towards the end. I mean, does the board want to talk about the feedback we've received in the, the comments before we start kind of coalescing some threads together? Or should we do that when we're looking at the specific qualifications? I want to give you all the option since we're not in the same room.
Um, oh, I guess I'll go first. I, I'm not surprised by the themes that are popping up, so not too much more there to discuss from my end.
I agree with Director Tran. So, I, and I'll leave it to the board members who have done this before to speak to when they want to do whatever because, you know, it's my first rodeo, so.
You are a quick learner, though, Vice President Sotak. That is for sure.
She is indeed. I, I'm good with just let's, let's proceed through it, and I think that things will come, a discussion will, will ensue organically after that point.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, President Cast, members of the board. Thank you again for having me and the team here today. So, as Libra mentioned, wow, like the level of engagement and participation from your community in particular, just absolutely phenomenal. We do this a lot, and this has to be one of the highest, if not the highest, response rates that we've seen, particularly for parents and families. So, over fifty-four percent of all the responses came from parents and families, and a really strong showing from teachers and students as well, super impressive. So, there's just kind of the breakdown, two thousand and fifty-one responses total, and then you can kind of see how it broke out by, by the various groups. So, lots of engagement, really strong showing there. Okay, so at this point, I, I think you all were already sent this, kind of the survey results here with the raw and the ranking. I just want to make sure everyone has that. Okay, so what I want to do is just go through one or two examples and make sure we're all reading it the same, and then we can kind of go from there. So, here at the top, again, is the breakdown of who responded. So, here's the teacher responses, also broken down by language. So, we got the teachers, the administrators, the support staff. We'll talk about this box here in red with the parents and so on. On the right side are the thirty-one characteristics, just kind of listed by the number that, that they correspond to. So, willing to listen to input and decision maker is characteristic number one, and kind of so on and so on. So, the way you read this is the following. If we look here at the parent box here, it's in red, the raw score indicates how many people chose this characteristic. So, in this example, six hundred and nine parents chose the willing to listen to input and as a decision maker as an important characteristic, one of the top ten characteristics for them. And that translates to a rank of one because that six hundred and nine was the most, the number of responses relative to other responses that they had, right? So, the second one, has leadership skills to respond to opportunities and challenges, was selected by five hundred and seventy-eight parents, so that gets a ranking of two. Does that make sense? How we have raw score and rank? Okay. So, that's important for this next screen because this is how we got to the top ten characteristics that we recommend as Rain Associates that the board consider based off of the rankings that are on that whole sheet that you saw. So, these are in order of combined ranking. So, when we say combined ranking, what we mean is we run it kind of through a, a formula here that looks at what teachers, administrators with all the different stakeholder groups, what they said, and it comes out with a one combined ranking. So, these are the top ten characteristics when we do an analysis of all of the survey responses. And then we have three more for your consideration. Generally speaking, what we want to do here is land on about ten to twelve characteristics, as Rich pointed out later, that really become kind of the core of what we do, particularly for the screening process as we start moving into that part of the, into that stage of the process. So, I won't read these to you, but we, I do want to open it up for a conversation to see if this is, you know, holistically what the board is thinking is a good representation of a profile for your next superintendent.
Feel free to, I guess this is part for the organic conversation now. So, if anyone wants to kick us off, what, I mean, what do you think about this? And I, I think it's helpful to take this just as a little prompt, like, like you were talking about, Vice President Sotak. This is where the survey results came from, but we have all those eight hundred or so comments as well, right? So, we do, this is a responsibility of the board of taking all that input together. So, we do have some latitude in order of how do we weave in all this data that we have to come up with the best possible list, if that helps.
So, I know this wasn't one of the typical characteristics, but I felt in reading through the comments in particular, that we are looking for someone that sees public education as not a finite resource, so that if one group of students receives something, it means you're taking away something from another group. And we need a leader that doesn't believe that, that they believe that if somebody benefits, everyone benefits. And, and we saw a lot of advocacy for different programs, and I think rightly so. We have a lot of really good programs, but we need someone with a philosophy that everyone, there, there are no losers when we provide services for some students.
So, you know, it's kind of interesting, Director Hayes, because number, again, reading all those comments, number nine, the strength of which that came up, you know, the, the support of our special education inclusionary practices that we've been working on for so many years. I was worried that there would be an unintended consequence by having that, and that folks that perhaps don't have their students in special education services were thinking that we wouldn't be as dedicated and focused as a system on other programs. So, maybe we could take your thoughts there, that, you know, every, you know, the desire to have every student benefit from a strong educational system and instructional programming. If perhaps we can widen number nine to, to take some of your empathy there, if, if that matches what you're thinking.
I like combining sort of that piece of, it's a, like a, you know, it's a yes and kind of philosophy rather than a okay, but philosophy, right? So, because I think, like you said, Director Cast, that special education is kind of in its own little place because it's required by law, but it, it's still different than what other kids are getting, but also keeping in mind that when we're adding programs or programming, that some students access and other students don't, but it's not taking away from the students who aren't accessing it. So, and I don't know how you all want to wordsmith that, but I think having those two together is, is beneficial for sure.
I, I agree, particularly with respect to, to number nine. It does call out, you know, the special education, which needs a lot of attention, but that's going to be the case, you know, in, in any district and particularly in this state. I like, I like the idea of perhaps, and you know, this is, this is going to be a matter of, how do we, how do we phrase these things when we put it into the profile or the ad that's going out to, to potential candidates? So, wordsmithing, I, I think would be good and somehow to make it, meeting the needs of, meeting the individual needs of every student, which I think has been a, a focus of ours and an intention of, of ours, that every student has unique needs, and our job is to make sure that each of them receive what they need from us. The other thing, I mean, we, we can also sort of, I think, massage these things as we come up with the questions that we're asking the candidates as well. If we can, you know, massage this so that it best reflects what we want to impress upon candidates, you know, as the characteristics we're looking for, obviously, but then also if, if we can't capture it all in, in an average, you know, then we'll follow up with that on details of the questions that we, that we've asked them. I was also just struck, you know, my difficulty in filling out the, the, the list and picking, picking the different items was, was trying to decide between multiple ones that kind of, but not completely expressed, you know, what I was looking for, for that particular area of thought. So, any one of them could be, you know, just as, as valid or, you know, combining some, I, I think, just to get everybody's, everybody's thoughts in there. But, you know, as a starting point, I think this is good.
So, Libra, thank you very much for that, Director McGordy. Libra did put in some wording for number nine. I'm just going to read it out loud. Grounded in the belief that designing systems to support those with the greatest needs ultimately strengthens outcomes for all students.
I still think it should say special education in there. I think that's very, I, I, I feel very strongly that someone who under, that there's a, a mention of special education specifically, just, and we can put both, but because that is a really, oh, okay, so that would be yes, both. Okay. Thank you. Got it?
Didn't, I didn't, I didn't see the chat. If I could just, if we could all, we could also add something to, where did it go? Number six? Classroom experience in a K-12 setting or, you know, massage that to include experience with special education or?
Well, um.
That may be tricky if they're not certified in special ed.
I was gonna make another suggestion around six. We, we haven't tied a bow around nine. I just want to acknowledge that. But around six, you know, there was one in our report to consider number twenty-seven about knowledge of emerging research in the area of curriculum and instructional design that came up relatively strong. I thought that was something that could be incorporated into number six if we chose. But for number nine, you know, I'm just going to read it all together, Dr. McGordy. I think this would be helpful so we can hear Libra's amend, not amendment, addendum almost. So, demonstrates a deep understanding of special education that meets the individualized needs of each student, grounded in the belief that designing systems to support those with the greatest needs ultimately strengthens outcomes for all students. What does the board think about that? This would be, yeah. Would that be okay for folks? Does that capture? Okay, we're getting thumbs ups and nods. Excellent.
President Cast, if I could jump in, just a thought. So, wordsmithing is very important, and we can certainly do some of that right now like we're doing, but we are taking good notes, and I would just offer that we will follow up, put this in a draft form. I'll send it to you for final approval on, on the final wording, and if we need to run it by another person or two or three or four, we can do that, but not that we have to wordsmith every, every item tonight.
Okay. That is helpful. I know that the, the process is awaiting this outcome, so it is nice to get everyone's input while we have them here, so. But let's open up about any of these characteristics if folks want to talk about them. Were there any that the board saw input on that didn't make the top ten? Do we need to? I'm not, you know, we don't have to lengthen it, but I just wanted to open up that conversation.
I have no memory.
So, one thing that might help with this one, I appreciate that President Cast, is kind of the next slide. So, these three characteristics didn't make the top ten based on ranking. However, if we just isolate what the board is looking for in terms of how they ranked, these were ones that at least three of the five board members chose as an important characteristic. So, these might be three, you could have some conversation over, around.
That's helpful, Richard. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. That is super helpful because you are right. I think for me, twelve is a non-negotiable. We have to have someone that's got experience working with our labor, with labor partners because we won't, we won't get a candidate passed if they don't have that background.
Do you mean number ten, Director Hayes? On the second page?
Um, I'm talking about number twelve on this page that has experienced effectively working with employee representative groups or unions.
Yeah, on the original list, it's number ten. Yeah.
Is that number ten?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I see.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought that wasn't in the groups. Okay.
Yeah.
Then it's already there. Problem solved. Look at us.
Well, no, so, no, it's not. Okay, so this is where the, the difference is. So, there's the original survey of thirty-one questions. They're in the parentheses on this slide, right?
That, that.
Where the numbers of the ranking are how they've come out of the process, right? So, this one through ten is the actual ranking of how they came out of the survey?
Correct. So, number one, willing to listen to input, but is a decision-maker is a number one. Well, that's a bad example. We could, it happens to be the first. So, number three, the third most common characteristic was promotes a positive and professional environment. On our list of the characteristics, it happens to be number twenty-eight. So, yeah, it can be a little bit confusing, but yes, the number on the left is the ranking. And so, I think Director Tran was also, you're talking about the same one, the one about employee representative. You were just numbering it differently. But these three, to be clear, are not in the top ten. So, what I, I think what I heard was, at least for one, from one board member, it would be important that we include has experience working effectively with employee labor groups into and maybe make it a top eleven right now. Yeah. Okay.
What, what would the board think about that knowledge of emerging research and best practice, having that be part of the K-12 experience? Are we allowed to combine?
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, I'm, I'm so sorry. I, it's, I'm on the East Coast, so it's way later, and my brain is shutting down. I'm so sorry, I, it's, I'm on the east coast, so it's way later and my brain is shutting down. I, I, I just got lost on what's happening here. My understanding of reading the little numbers in the parentheses is that the, if it says number seven after number eleven. That means it's in the top ten, because number seven, okay.
That was just the number on the original survey. That's the number question it was on the thirty one characteristic survey, those parentheses. That's like the order of the question when it was asked by everyone. When you got that list, that's what number it was on the survey.
So, President Cass, when you said number ten was in the, no, no, what is number twelve? The Employee Labor Union, when you said that was in the top ten, is it in the top ten?
No, no, so.
Okay.
That, so, uh, number, if we stay on this slide really quickly right here. What I was talking about was not about the, the la- the bargaining experience. Um, I was talking about this, the one that came out as the highest ranking, which was question thirty one, has experience. Has classroom experience. I wanted to amend on to that, something that came up kind of in our, our second tier of responses about having curriculum. Um, curriculum experience as well, which was originally question twenty seven. Knowledge of emerging research in the area of curriculum and instructional design.
Okay.
Through, so this is our top, the top ten responses with everyone's input. And then when Richard moved us to the next slide, that was kind of the second tier of, of popular answers.
Okay.
That's where the bargaining experience came up.
Okay, so I will, uh, one, I do not disagree with what you've just said, President Cass, but I'm going to go back to my original statement that the. Experience in, uh, working with labor partners for me is a non-negotiable in this. Characteristic group that we create.
So I think, I think we are going to add that as a part of our top eleven list, or.
Okay, I did, I got a little lost there when we, okay, all right, just making sure it's staying, all right, all right, I'm shutting up, here we go.
Yeah, so just in summary, right now, it looks like we're at eleven because we've added the employee relations, I think everyone seems to agree that that was important, so. Now we're at the top eleven, and then in the chat, I just dropped, um, some draft language of combining six and twenty seven.
Thank you. So the, is that tracking for people so far? Okay, you, do you mind going on one, back to the next slide one more time? Cause there is that, the one that was ranked number eleven. Um, the community visibility, because that was something that came through on comments as well. So I wanted to see what folks thought about that one, I mean. I don't want to belabor this and have all the answers be the best answers, but also I want to make sure I leave space for us to talk about this too.
I haven't had a chance to peruse the comments as extensively as the rest of you. Um, but, uh, uh. Superintendent, let's use Superintendent Tully as an example here, right? Um, while he is often at district events and different things in that way. Um, he is maybe not at, I mean, I, I'm wondering what. Range of community groups and organization and events this is entailing. That was kind of my question, it's like, what, what is? Cause I think that, yes, you should be involved, but I don't expect him to be at my kid's swim meet. Um, on Saturday, or, you know, at every single elementary track meet. You know, so, or, or things that are not district related necessarily all the time. So, um, I, I was just wondering what other people's kind of takes on this, or. If you've gathered sort of thoughts from the community as to, like, what that would encompass or entail.
Um, I'll just say what I heard from community was, um. Visibility, I mean, there was some comments around sports and activities, but it was mostly around. Not being in the office all day. Um, but kind of being in buildings, um, not all the time, but at least being known. To be seen outside of an office room, their office in particular, does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I agree with that, I, I think, I'm also looking at, um. Number two in our top ten list and wondering if. If some, if not all of, of number eleven there has been captured, or if we can wordsmith it to capture it. A little better, because the, you know, the leadership skills to respond to the challenges of a diverse student body and community. You know, some of that is reaching out to the community, which, you know, Superintendent Tully does, and, um, going to community events. You know, um, having regular meetings with community partners, um. Yeah, I, I, I agree, I think that's, that's something that came across in the, the comments that I read, I did not read all eight hundred or so. But a lot of the comments, uh, did, did talk about that. So yeah, if there's a way to just sort of slide it in with a, a piece of one of the, the other ones, that would be good.
I, I like what the, the explanation, yes, and I also like the explanation that Libra. Provided, which is attending, um, district wide events that, where. The person can slot it in, um. I think also we can lean on his staff. Um, folks who are part of the family engagement center and all of that to do some of the, the heavy lifting on the community engagement. Just because he, you know, uh, I say he because currently it's, uh, he, but they are, uh. Not always able to be everywhere all at once, um, and so that's why, um. I'm glad to see the, one of the top ten is, uh, leadership skills and really. Making sure that he has, uh, the experience to, to lean on his, on, on their staff when appropriate.
If we were to combine twenty seven and six, um, and then add the one on employee relations. And the one on visibility that we just, we're talking about right now, that would put us at a top twelve, which is not unusual. You know, it's usually t- uh, ten to twelve characteristics, uh, is what we shoot for, so. We could leave that, the language as is, and then we could have twelve characteristics if we combine six and twenty seven.
All right, that would, sounds like that would capture everyone's input.
Okay.
Great.
We'll make note of that. All right, Steve.
Hey, well, we did really well. I'm still taking notes here, so thank you. Uh, I will draft this up, I'll have Richard and Rich and Libra look at it, and I'll have President Cass look at it, and we'll just get it. Totally wordsmithed so that it all looks good and makes sense. Cause we do want to get this published as soon as possible, so, uh, we'll get on that, uh, tonight and tomorrow morning early and, and get that out, so, uh. That'll be really nice to have that completed, I think it'll be a helpful document throughout the rest of the process, so thank you. So, uh, yeah, this, uh, next slide, really the last one, just to have some reminders about the timeline, it's moving right along, so our next milestone. Is on April twentieth, that's when applications are due. Um, we currently, as I mentioned earlier, we have nine completed applications, we have sixteen incomplete, so there is a lot of interest out there. And, uh, we expect a lot of those to be received this week. Our next meeting after that will be, um, our, our next meeting will be on April thirtieth, and at that point, we'll present to you the top ten or twelve. Candidates that are the top ten or twelve in our opinion. Based on this profile, based on experience, based on education, and, uh, you will receive all of that, uh, information. On April twenty seventh, which is a Sunday. And it doesn't give you a lot of time to do your homework, but we need a week to totally vet the candidates. We do individual interviews with them, we do in-depth, uh, reference checking. Uh, so we need that week to write those reports and get that done, so that you can see all that information in an understandable format. You'll get the Spart hire videos at that time, that's about a ten minute video with three or four questions, you'll be able to see. The candidates in action impromptu, and they only get one or two takes, I think only one take. And they have to be on their feet, thinking about these things, they don't get the questions ahead of time, that's good information, and then of course. All of the application materials, the reference letters and all that kind of stuff. In addition to the top twelve, which we will present to you, uh, you will have access to every single application. And if you disagree with us and you say, hey, uh, we want this person to be interviewed in the first round, he's not in your top twelve, or she's not in your top twelve. But we, we like this person, and that's obviously, uh, your decision to make, so. That'll be a, some good dialogue, and that'll be a very exciting meeting, um. On April thirtieth, and, uh. At that meeting, you'll decide who to interview in the first round, and that first round is scheduled for May seventh and eighth, and I'm. Pretty sure we agreed it was going to be virtual, isn't that correct, President Cass?
We did agree on that, so the board will be in a room together. Um, so that we can be with each other as we're interviewing the, that first round set of candidates. And that means that also Rain Associates doesn't have to be there as well, but we will have, after the last interview, a meeting with. An executive session, virtual meeting, so that Rain Associates can participate to help us narrow down to the second round.
Yes, and then that second round comes pretty quickly, May twelfth and thirteenth, and. President Cass has showed me a draft schedule, I think that's in the works, so we have a plan for those two days, so, uh, that'll be an exciting time as well, but it. It's going to move fast from here on out, which is what we want, because we don't announce a finalist in May. Any, any questions for us or anything we missed?
Now, this is, this has been really great, you know, I'm going to go ahead and, and get some of the, uh, summary to our communications department. So we can keep our, um, community updated, especially since they were so generous with their time providing input. Um, you know, not that North Shore is competitive, but the fact that we had such a great response, one of the best you've seen. There'll be a little bit of pride around that, not going to lie, so we'll, uh, we'll go ahead and, and forward on that feedback, so thank you so much for that. Got Director Tran?
Um, yeah, I, this is more. About the process itself that may be more on the North Shore side than Rain Associates, how did we decide which families to, uh, bring into? The stakeholder meetings? If someone could remind me.
It was, um, a list of families from Carrie, so from our family engagement, right? And so that, she has that complete list, but from, um, the Marco and Trina Voss list, basically.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, then, um, open for comment, I guess, this is, this is wonderful, uh, over, what was it, eight hundred and twenty-five or? Something like that, um, survey responses, um, quite a few responses in Spanish as well, so really appreciate the. The participation from the community in this one, um, and, um. Looking forward to filling that spot.
And if I could, um, just say, uh, the student group that came, wow. Those were pretty amazing students, I felt, I walked away saying, you know, the world's in good hands. It's just incredible group of students, you guys should be proud.
Thank you, we do have a, a advised student advisory board who spends a good amount of time with our superintendent, so they're actually. They are definitely subject matter experts when it comes to that, but leadership role, so thank you for that feedback, Libra. Okay, any other thoughts or questions? Um, where it's, just so the board knows, you'll see the slide deck in the Friday brief, but af- the day after April twentieth, when the deadline closes, is when we have. Conversations with the board on the twenty first, so we'll be able to provide an update to the community then as well. And we'll have a final candidate application count too, which will be kind of a neat addition as well, and we'll be able to get some, um. Some feedback from the participants at conversations with the board on, um, topics around the superintendent, yeah, Director Hayes.
It, is, is there more coming, or are we so amazing that we finished a three hour meeting in forty seven minutes? Okay, I love it, so happy to hear that.
Yes, it was a great, it was a great discussion, I did, I did remember one thing I want, I meant to mention, and that is that. I will be sending an email or Peggy or, uh, we'll be sending an email, we need your, uh, feedback on interview questions. We have, uh, kind of a stock list that we provide, and also in every one of our stakeholder sessions, we ask. Participants give us ideas on interview questions, so we will provide that list as well. And so, uh, you'll have a chance to really vote on those and. We'll finalize or start to finalize the first round, now of course we'll do a separate set for the second round, but there's going to be an email to that effect in the, in the near future.
And then we'll, we'll have time on the thirtieth, correct, to talk about interview questions?
Yes.
Great, and we'll have time for, um, questions on the contract then as well. Anything we forgot? Yeah, Director McCordy.
Yeah, so this is a little bit unrelated, but I just realized, um, uh, conversations with the board, I'm miss- going to miss it. Um, and I'm now really, really even more upset that I'm going to miss it, so please take good notes for me. I would love to hear what people are, what people are asking and saying.
Absolutely. All right, well. If there's not much else, we can let Director Hayes on the east coast get ready to journey back to Seattle tomorrow and. Um, get the ball rolling. Okay, so, so you know more discussion, we can go ahead and turn this mini, thank you so much. To our great Rain Associates team, like this is a really great input that you brought to us, and it obviously made this conversation so much more streamlined. Having all this great feedback, so thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Um, thank you so much, everyone, for your hard work, and, you know, here we go, the ball keeps rolling.
Thanks, everybody.